Good evening. Thank you for attending September 9, 2024, meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. Printed agendas are available for you at the back of the room, or you may find them on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website at www.wcsoh.org. Click on the "Our District" link, select the Board of Education, and then follow the Board docs linked to our current meeting agenda. There will be two opportunities to address the Board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 7.01. The first set of comments is relative to Agenda Items 8.01 through 12.02. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 13.01. There is a sign-up sheet located at the back of the room on the table. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the Board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Hendricks, will you please call the roll?
Uh, good.
Do we have to do?
Do the treasuries.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion to appoint Laura Hendricks as Treasurer pro tempore for the September 9, 2024 Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
Second. Will you take the vote?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Now will you please take the roll? Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Here.
Sorry.
Mrs. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
And will you all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is the fun part of the evening. We get to recognize Mark Twain and Robert Frost, and I'm gonna welcome Ms. Altman to the podium.
Thank you, President Meyer, members of the Board, Ms. Hamburg and Ms. Hendricks. It is my great honor to be able to share about the 50th anniversary of Mark Twain and Robert Frost. So would Mark Twain Elementary Principal Tracy White and Robert Frost Elementary Principal Angela Hayes please come up and join me? Thank you. Thank you. We are recognizing Mark Twain and Robert Frost Elementary this evening for celebrating their 50th anniversaries this year. Both buildings opened in 1974 and are named after celebrated writers, keeping with Westerville's history of naming its elementary schools after influential American authors. Both buildings were also built as open space concept schools. I went to both as open space concept schools. And in 2002, I'm glad to say that Mark Twain and Robert Frost were renovated with the addition of four classrooms and permanent walls to create separate classrooms. Tracy, Angela, congratulations to you as well as your staff and families for celebrating 50 years of excellence in providing children with an outstanding environment in which to grow, learn, and succeed. And I also want to acknowledge staff members from Mark Twain and Robert Frost who are in the audience this evening. Would you mind standing up if there are any other staff members from Mark Twain and Robert Frost? So thank you all. Thank you. And I just want to say I think there are some events people might want to keep their eyes out for about these anniversaries. So take a peek on the socials and all of that to find out about the events. So please come on up. And congratulations to Mark Twain and Robert Frost. Thank you.
Congratulations again. Moving along, next up we have the Superintendent's Report. Ms. Hamburg?
Thank you. I have a few things to share this evening. First of all, I wanted to share with the Board and the community that we had our first Superintendent's Student Advisory Session of the Year this past week. Definitely has been one of my favorite events so far since I've been here in Westerville. We have about 60 students total from our three high schools that participate on the advisory group. And based on their feedback from last year, they really enjoyed meeting here together. So they got new ideas and were able to meet other students from the other high schools. So we decided we wanted to do our first meeting here together, and then our team will travel to their respective high schools to have conversations with them about changes they'd like to see in their own buildings. So we were able to get feedback from them on topics like school spirit, course offerings, the physical facilities that they are in every day, and all kinds of different areas. So a big thank you to our high school administrators and to our team here at the district office for helping to facilitate those activities. We also participated in an activity where they put together a big version of our "We Are the Ville" bell with letters that they designed to represent all the things they love about Westerville. So that was a really cool activity that Becca Yanni loved. So I appreciate everybody's help with that, and we're looking forward to meeting with them back in their meeting in their buildings in October. And then they will also be putting together their Hall of Fame induction ceremonies for the spring as well. So a great group and really enjoyable to be around those students. Would also like to share an update on transportation. We know as Randy's actually here tonight, he's going to be talking to you about an agenda item here in just a bit, but had asked him kind of for some information because we are struggling with getting routes covered, and I just want to kind of give an update there. He had given an update with his transportation report, I think just about a month ago when he gave that, that we had some folks hired and in training. It is a pretty long process to get drivers trained, which is a good thing, but also a challenge. So I can tell you right now, we have seven open routes. We do have three long-term absences that will exceed beyond September. We've had two resignations since the start of the year. We currently have five drivers who are in active training. We have another sixer in the next phase of onboarding with the pre-employment processing. So there are 11 folks that are kind of in the hopper that will greatly help us with our shortages. And we just made another new hire last week. So things are looking up once we can get everybody through the training process and able to take over. We have had a lot of illness already, as I'm sure folks have seen COVID and some other illness that has been running through the district. So that has not helped with having those routes covered. We have three current on-bus instructors, which are our school bus driver trainers, and one additional person was hired this summer from another district who is working on filling an additional training position. It's been challenging for us to have those folks free to do the training because they've had to cover routes because we have absent drivers. So it's taking a little longer to get the training done. But starting next week, Randy feels confident they're able to cover some of those midday assignments for two of the three to allow for some more training hours. We'll share, we've had three early release days so far this school year. And so there are other strategies, I know he's mentioned before, that we can consider with delays and different types of delays in early release. But our goal is to make sure that we're at least getting as full of a school day in as we can. Typically, those early releases or late starts have been more targeted at the older kids so that the little ones' schedules are not as disruptive. So it's kind of a quick overview there. I'm sure if you have additional questions on that when Randy comes up to the podium, we can ask those. But I wanted to give you an update on that because I know for all of us, it's frustrating, including our transportation department, because they're working very hard covering extra routes, trying to get our kids to and from school, and we're still just falling a little bit short some days with that. I do want to give a reminder, Columbus has been in the news because of having to cover, they've declared it impractical to cover, and again, Randy may have more insight on this, but all of the routes to the private schools. And so that's one of the things I know the Board asked about last time when he gave his transportation report, is, you know, we do still have to cover all those even when we're short. So we're doing early releases for our students, but we're still having to cover those private school routes. So that is a huge challenge for us, and I just want to remind folks of that. Anything on that before I move to my next item? Okay. I did want to give an update. I know we have several folks in the audience, I'm sure, regarding Lifeways Academy, so I wouldn't have given an update there. I want to thank the many community members who've reached out on both sides of the issue. We have heard from many people on both sides. We appreciate your passion. At the last meeting, and I wanted to give this update now during my report because I know we have some folks signed up to speak so they at least have some context of kind of where things are. Last meeting, our Board of Education voted to suspend the policy called Absences for Religious Instruction, Policy 5223, which that suspension was to be effective until the next meeting, so it is back in place. While that policy is now back in effect, the district has concerns with Lifeways Academy meeting some of the requirements, so we have been working on that. I'd like to say I appreciate the documents and emails that Lifeways leaders have sent in those two weeks since the last regular Board meeting. During that time, our team has had multiple meetings with our attorneys. I've spoken with other superintendents, and we've had multiple communications with the Ohio Department of Education and Workforces Nutrition Department about feeding students during the absences under this policy. So we last met with our attorneys on Thursday afternoon, and as I've shared with the leadership of Lifeways, our attorneys were not yet comfortable with making a recommendation. They are working on an MOU. They did not feel they would have it for tonight's meeting for the Board to be able to consider yet. So we will keep you updated as we work through that process. And that MOU is really geared at making sure that there's compliance with the Board policy if Lifeways is to continue operating. So I just want to say while we appreciate Lifeways Academy's urgency, we want to make sure we've done our due diligence in ensuring that policy compliance. Our team has spent a considerable amount of time on this issue as we've been trying to get the year started, so thank you for your patience. We've attempted to fairly balance our attention on this compliance issue with all the many other demands on our time right now for our own programs. So I just want to clarify, I have received some emails questioning if we should be using our time as an administration on Lifeways policy compliance. I've confirmed with our attorneys that not only is it an appropriate use, but we have a responsibility to make sure any outside organization is adhering to our policies. So it was just kind of a quick update I wanted to provide. I know lots of folks have reached out and were interested on whether or not the Board would be taking any action. As you can see, there's not a scheduled action item. Certainly, the Board has Board member comments at the end of the meeting where they may make additional comments, and certainly, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
I just, I have a question, just for clarity's sake. When we say compliance with policy, we're not, we're talking about criteria within the policy, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Not the policy itself, but just the criteria within the policy?
Correct.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Right. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Meyer.
Thank you. All right. Moving along to Agenda Item, to the approval of Board minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, August 26, 2024?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Hendricks? Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
I'm gonna abstain. I was, I had COVID. I wasn't here. All right. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special session Board meeting held on Thursday, September 5, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Ms. Hendricks? Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Next up is public comments. We have none. Moving to financials. And may I have a motion to approve the insurance premiums for calendar year 2025?
So moved. Second.
And Ms. Hendricks, will you be talking to us about this?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Thanks. Yes. So yes, it's that time of year where we have to review our insurance premiums. And this year, our medical premium is going to be increasing by 6.2%. Our dental insurance premium by 7.7%. Just a reminder that employees pay 10% of that premium for single and 20% for family. Dental is 100% paid by the Board. Last year, our premiums increased by 13.9% for medical, so this is a much better outcome so far. We did have a pharmacy benefit review that we did this year that helped keep that down a little lower as well. And then dental has not changed for several years. That's stayed the same rate, so this is the first increase we've seen in quite some time.
Any questions or comments?
I'll just thank you for the work on that. I know it actually takes work to keep the premiums down. So please, thank you to everybody who's worked on it.
All right. Take the vote. Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the purchases in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5705.41D1 and Board Policy 6320?
So moved. Second.
And Ms. Hendricks?
Okay. Yes, so we have several on the Board agenda tonight for you. Again, this is when a purchase is made or a service is requested prior to the purchase order being open. Sometimes that's just timing. There are different things that can cause that. So tonight, we have four on the agenda for you. One is a trainer that was for food service. Purchase order was open prior to, but it accidentally got closed in error, so we had to reopen, and we still have to follow these rules. Same for the second one, Minerva Park a Cheer Camp event. There was a PO open, and they thought it had gotten paid, and it had not. So same situation. The last two on the agenda are for St. Paul's, one of our auxiliary schools. So we do manage funds from the state for those schools, and it's a timing issue. Those funds are not available till July 1, but they committed to some training and software at the end of last school year. So it's just a timing issue. All those funds were budgeted and planned. It was just some timing issues and some little bit of errors in closing some POs.
Any questions, comments? Okay.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And is it okay if I take the consent agenda as one consent personnel agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Or the personnel consent agenda. And may I have a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda as one, 9.01 through 9.15?
So moved.
Second. And welcome, Mr. Cooper.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the Board, Ms. Hendricks, and Ms. Hamburg. This evening's personnel consent agenda consists of action items with regard to resignations, retirements, leaves of absence, contract status changes, one-time pays, and other employment-related decisions. Additionally, there are three MOUs and one MOA with our teachers' union, the Westerville Educators Association, or WEA. We have two staff members who have announced their retirement on this evening's agenda. Karen McManus is retiring after 25 years of service, and Gina Moore after 31 years of service to our district. We appreciate all they've done for our students, staff, and community, and wish them the best in their years ahead. Under Item 9.09, it is my pleasure to introduce Melanie Amato to the Board of Education this evening. She is our recommendation for our new Executive Director of Communications and Community Engagement. Ms. Amato is a district resident who brings more than 15 years of experience, diverse communication experiences, I should say, to the district. She most recently served as Director of Communications for the Ohio Secretary of State. So welcome to Melanie. Our three MOUs and one MOA with the WEA this evening are renewals of previous agreements in place. Due to the current one-year extension of the WEA collective bargaining agreement, it is recommended these one-year agreements are also extended. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? Just congratulations to retirees.
Thank you.
Ms. Hendricks?
All right. Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. No new, no old business, so moving along to new business. And we have our first reading of entrance requirements, Policy 5112. And I'm going to invite Mr. Doran and Ms. Relford up to the podium, please. Welcome.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the Board. Ms. Relford and I are here to present to you a change in the policy for the entrance guidelines, age entrance guidelines for kindergarteners, moving that date from September 30 to August 1. The change is desired based on student performance and also student readiness as we look to make sure that the kids are just better prepared before they start in that curriculum. It's kindergarten curriculum, but it's still advanced curriculum. Do you have any questions?
I know that there is some leeway, right?
Absolutely.
Could you talk a little bit about that, so for families that are just preparing for next year?
Sure. As you know, anybody, it's been explained, you know, to us, that people plan for kindergarten for a very long time. So next year, while the age requirement will be in play, anybody that wants to opt in within the date ranges that were moved, so from August 2 to September 30, those students will not be eligible for, unless they go through our early entrance procedural guidelines the following year. This year, they may opt into and still start kindergarten as planned.
Great. Thank you.
So they're all in, or they have to request to opt in?
They'll have to just start the enrollment process. So if they choose not to start the enrollment process, if they choose to start, they will be in.
Just wondering, do the kiddos that are five by August 1, do they get, are they automatically entered into all-day if that's what they choose? Or could someone that is on the cusp and is part maybe September 1? I guess I'm wondering.
How it relates to all-day K?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Did, how it relates to all-day K? Is that what I heard?
Well, I'm just worried about eligibility with all-day K and kids that are meeting the requirement. And the kids that aren't meeting the requirement but were grandfathering them in, correct? That's what it sounds like?
That is correct. And once a student is enrolled, they are eligible for the all-day K lottery. So it is, that is definitely a lottery. We'd have to change that policy if we wanted to change how students got into all-day kindergarten.
Okay.
Another policy. We can look at that if the Board would like. All right. If the Board would like us to look at that, we can. But as Mr. Doran said, that would be looking at another policy.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for that. I just was thinking about the questions that are going to come down the pike, right? Like, oh, you've changed the policy. And yeah. Okay. And then how are we going to get the information out to let families know that we've changed the date?
We'll do that in the same way that we let families know that it's time to register for kindergarten. So we'll start a media campaign for that relatively soon. I mean, outside of reading our Board minutes, right? So we'll start a media campaign soon because kindergarten enrollment starts in November. So we're not that many weeks away. So the campaign will be starting soon.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Just one quick question on the dates, right? The August 1 and September 31 date. Can you talk about why those dates?
Well, there are only two dates that we can choose. One is September 30, and one is August 1. And
Yeah.
It's by law. And I, my belief, I'd have to go back and research why they chose those two dates, but because some schools start later and other schools start earlier.
Yeah, that's
So if you're not going to start till after Labor Day, you don't need an August 1 date.
Yeah, thank you. I, that was my recollection and understanding. I just want people to understand, we can't choose like the first day of school. We cannot. By law, there are two dates. Got to pick one or the other.
We can't choose the entrance age. So August 1 or September 30. And because we tend to start school in the late in the second week or the beginning of the third week of August, a September 30 birthday has students who are four years old in school for several weeks. And it just starts potentially, some concerns that will continue to grow.
Great. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that if somebody next year wants to opt into the early entrance, all they have to do is enroll. There's like no testing or anything that the kids have to go through.
There is no testing.
Okay. Thank you.
If they, if they fall within the August 2 through September 30, they
Correct.
Outside of that date, they will still have to use our early entrance testing requirements, which is very stringent.
Okay. Thank you.
And then following that year, we'll go, there will not be an opportunity other than testing into kindergarten?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Okay. Next up, may I have a motion to approve the resolution for impracticality of transportation?
So moved. Second.
Welcome, Mr. Snyder.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, Board members, Ms. Hamburg, Ms. Hendricks. Before you this evening is a declaration of impracticality for transportation for the identified students before you. Ohio law allows for public school districts to determine the impracticality of transportation after considerations of several factors, such as the cost of providing transportation and the number of students transported. This past July 8, the Board passed a resolution declaring one student impractical for transportation. And before you this evening is a list containing 64 additional students deemed impractical for transportation. The Department of Purchasing and Logistics of Westerville City Schools has evaluated each listed private school student per the requirements of Section 3327.02 of the Ohio Revised Code and declared the listed students impractical to transport. Before you again this evening is a list of 64 students representing 21 schools. Approving this resolution would allow the district to offer payment in lieu of transportation in accordance in the manner provided per the Ohio Revised Code. The Department of Education and Workforce also determines the payment in lieu amount, which is paid for each student. Therefore, it is our recommendation that the Board proceed and approve this evening this declaration of impracticality for transportation. And I certainly would be happy to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Any questions, comments?
Just for audience members and people that may be watching at home, what is the criteria for determining if a child is potentially impractical for transportation?
The first step is to determine if they're actually eligible for that transportation. The school itself has to be recognized by the Department of Education and Workforce as being a school that meets the criteria set forth by that department. Additionally, the student, and this, when we hear about the 30-minute rule, for clarity, but also as a reminder, that 30-minute rule is not 30 minutes from the student's residence to the school in which they are choosing to attend, or the parents are choosing for them to attend. Rather, it's 30 minutes from the school they would attend in their home catchment area. So I'll use Hawthorne Elementary as an example. If we were to determine eligibility for transportation, there would be a timing determined from Hawthorne Elementary, their front door, to the front door of the non-public or community school that the student attends. Certainly, a very important point of clarity is it's the 30-minute eligibility from the school in which the student would attend if they were to attend the public school of assignment. And then after that, we also determine, really, those honestly, Ms. Valentine are the two determining factors. Is the school credited according to the Department of Education and Workforce? And the second is the student eligible for transportation based on that ruling. And then we go to the sixth criteria and determine out of those six criteria which ones are honestly met to declare that impracticality.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. So related to transportation issues and challenges and having enough bus drivers and so on, what is our latitude in terms of adjusting the way we've approached impracticality to transport if we're having trouble getting our own students because of a bus driver shortage to and from school?
State law, just a couple of years ago, this law hasn't been in existence for very long. But once a school district starts a school year, they are not allowed to reduce their service levels, whether it be for their public school students, and I'll use an example. If we had a policy in place that, well, we have those policies in place, so bear with me. But if we have a school that is provided transportation to a certain area, it's within that non-transportation boundary up to two miles that we're permitted to go up to. If they were, the Board were to decide, we're going to increase that distance they were, the board were to decide, we're going to increase that distance from the school for the non-transportation area, that would have to be done during the summer, we're not permitted to reduce services through the school year. Certainly, we could increase services if parameters were to change or opportunities were to present themselves to do so. But we're not permitted to reduce service, and that does include declaring students impractical for transportation once we're providing that service at the beginning of the year.
Thanks for, for walking through that because I think as we get into the year and, you know, we've had a few resignations and I know we're working on getting more drivers up and running, but, and this is hypothetical, this is not what's happened, but even if we had the resignation of several drivers, we still couldn't pull back on transporting students to non-public schools.
Correct.
So I just want everyone to understand that. This is a commitment that is made at the beginning of the year. And so sometimes, you know, I hear people say, well, why are we still transporting those students when we're having trouble getting our own? And that's why, once we start the year, we, we can't reduce that. So I would just be very interested in learning more about how we might approach this next year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Okay. Take that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve out-of-state overnight field trips?
So moved. Second. And welcome, Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening, President Meyer, members of the board, Superintendent Hamburg, and Ms. Hendricks. I have two trips for you to consider this evening, the first of which is Westerville-Norse AP US Government and US History. Students and teachers would like to plan to go to Washington DC in February. Students would not miss any class. They would leave after school on a Thursday, and then that Friday is off for students and a professional development day for teachers. And then the second trip, request tonight is Heritage Middle School taking sixth graders to New York. And this would take place after the school year, so this is an enrichment opportunity available to sixth grade families. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you.
Will you please take the vote, Ms. Hendricks?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Okay. Now we're to public comments, and I'm going to ask that, as you approach, you please state your name and your address. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screens, and Mr. Dorn will call time when your five minutes have elapsed. If you have nothing, I'm going to ask, because we have a lot of people here, and would like to move through, make sure every, you know, we hear all of the information and the comments, but if you have nothing new to add, I'm going to ask that you just state your name, your address, and, you know, I'm in support or I'm against, and, you know, if you have someone that you really appreciated their comments and I echo so-and-so. Please keep your comments professional, avoid the use of inappropriate language, and refrain from identifying individuals in the event of a complaint. Please address your comments to the board and not to the audience. If you choose not to speak because of the fact that someone's already mentioned everything that you said, you can provide your comments to Mr. Dorn. I promise you, they will be read. But with that, I'm going to call up Ms. Beth Eddy. Welcome.
It's, it's on. Thank you for letting us speak. Wonderful Westerville Board of Education. I am Beth Eddy. My address is 5571 Dutch Lane, Johnstown, Ohio, not Westerville, but some of you might know, I taught in Westerville for 25 years. I was a chemistry teacher at Westerville South, and I loved Westerville South, and I loved my students very, very much. And I kind of retired in 2020 because now I teach three days a week. And one of those days, I teach for LifeWise at Northridge Elementary, which is just where I live. And I wanted to take you back to February of 2020. I was, I was eating lunch with my colleagues, my science colleagues, and I was talking about how I wanted to change the curriculum, not change the curriculum, but change my classroom. I wanted to improve it. I had put all of my classroom in school logi, and I thought, this is going to be great. Little did I know, the next month, it was really going to be a good idea. But one of the teachers turned to me and said, why are you doing this? Why are you changing your classroom around? This is the last year you're teaching. And I said, because I really love my students. I want them to love chemistry and love learning, and I love them. And it really makes a difference to me. I have looked at Bible school curriculum for over 40 years, and I can tell you that the LifeWise curriculum is the best curriculum I have ever seen. And that's why I'm a LifeWise teacher. I don't take pay, I'm a volunteer, because I love it so much. Every week, my students come to me, and they find out they are cherished, and they are so loved by us, and they are special. I let them know, there's nobody in the history of the world like you, and there never will be. And God has a plan for you, and it's your job to find out what that is. They get that message every week. And you know what? We say, it's going to be a rough life. You're going to have depression and anxiety. And we say, and here's what you can do to fight it. So we give them coping tools. Well, it's a terrible time for, I've never seen such anxiety and depression among my students. I still teach chemistry one day a week. But you know what? You have a way of bringing hope to the students through keeping LifeWise here at Westerville. And I hope that's what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, next up, we have Ms. Erin Taylor. Welcome.
Thank you, President Meyer, board members, and Superintendent Hamburg. My name is Erin Taylor. I live at 329 Mary Avenue, Westerville, Ohio. I'm a former public school educator, a Westerville resident and mother, but today I speak to you especially as a veteran LifeWise teacher who's been serving a group of students right here from an elementary in Westerville for the last two school years. In fact, this Thursday, I would be teaching the students whose parents have already signed them up again for this year if it weren't for the suspension of the policy that allows LifeWise to operate. To my knowledge, none of you have seen a LifeWise class in action, so I hope that my perspective gives you insight so that you know the truth about a program that's directly affected by your decisions. From the moment I and the LifeWise volunteers enter the school, we take great care to be compliant, inviting, and positive in our attitude toward every adult and student with whom we interact. LifeWise students begin arriving with their lunches in the hallway, while all of the students in the same grade levels are also transitioning to either lunch or recess. So the movement to line up for a LifeWise class blends right in with the Home of Activity Present in that area of the building. Myself and the LifeWise volunteers greet the children by name and welcome them with a smile and an attitude of anticipation. Our weekly time together is the highlight of the week for the LifeWise staff. We don't teach these students every day, all day. This is not the middle of just another Thursday for us. We are serving these children with fresh energy and excitement to be with them. So for about one hour a week, because their parents want them to, my students are leaving the school building. What they are not leaving is a fully staffed and safe environment with challenging learning goals, including memorization and critical thinking. The students enter the red bus with adults whose sole purpose is to sit with them on the bus ride and listen to them. Connection is in the very fiber of every LifeWise class, and we know students need that. If LifeWise did nothing else for the students, the benefit of them just being heard is undeniable. But that's not all. We're skilled at listening to the students and encouraging them to apply the principles and character qualities we've been learning together. We listen and guide, and they open up. Many students share things they want to pray about or things they want to celebrate. Some visit with friends from other classrooms who share their same interest in learning from the Bible. The time spent on the bus, as well as throughout the LifeWise time, is organized, intentional, and most importantly, relational. Upon arrival at the LifeWise site, my students are taught in a brand-new building with safety features in place. They eat lunch with well-trained and caring adults. They participate in games and movement activities and receive a well-planned lesson on character using biblical examples. They are challenged to apply what they have learned to become better students, community members, and friends. And then they return safely to the school during the same time that all of their classmates are also transitioning back to class from lunch and recess. When my students are leaving their time with me, they often express an interest in including a friend or a classmate in LifeWise, and I tell them that they may invite them to ask their parents. I have never once, in the two years I've taught, promised or provided any incentive for this invitation. Finally, it is important to note that many of my LifeWise students are from families that may struggle to have access to other extracurricular activities. Many of my students are from families who are new to the United States. Most live in apartments. I believe many of them receive a free or reduced lunch. All that to say, LifeWise is a big deal for the students from the school in which I serve. Students that might be underserved in other programs have access to a high-quality, Bible-based character education class during school hours with LifeWise. I want you to be aware of the population of students that your decision to pause the release time religious instruction policy will hurt. I urge you to continue the RTRI policy that allows LifeWise to serve families in the community that clearly desire it. I know that your participation as a school board member is motivated by a desire to serve the community and make decisions in its best interest and ensuring that everyone belongs. Allow LifeWise to continue doing just that, giving Christian students and those interested in the Christian faith a place to belong. Work with LifeWise to overcome any obstacles. It is worth finding a way for students to eat lunch in compliance with state policy. My students are literally waiting and counting on you to act on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Deana, and I'm going to appreciate that you did some phonetics here. Jam Goshen, did I say it right?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Meyer, members of the Westerville City School Board, Superintendent Hamburg, and Ms. Hendricks. I am Deana Jam Goshen, 6320 Mount Royal Avenue, Westerville. And I'm here as a LifeWise Westerville teacher to share my support for LifeWise Academy and for religious release time instruction. I have lived in Westerville School District for nine years. I have an elementary education degree and have served children all my adult life. Last year, I was a classroom volunteer and a substitute teacher. As such, I experienced the program in all of the Westerville schools participating. I never saw any candy, gifts, parties, or any kind of bribes to reward students. I never saw any signs of bullying at LifeWise. I never saw any staff tell children to recruit other children, and I never saw children arriving late back to school or any problems with the office staff. What I did see were children who wanted to be there, were eager to experience the stories, were encouraging to each other, and were actively participating in the games, all while showing the character traits that are such a major part of the LifeWise program. I've heard and read many negative comments about LifeWise. Most of these extreme examples did not happen in Westerville. Some are from websites and videos around the country. They are exaggerated, pulled out of context, and did not have the complete facts. Again, they were not in Westerville. We've been trained in classroom management, first aid CPR, child abuse awareness, and even EpiPen use. I've had the same amount of training and screening that I received to teach preschool through Ohio, to work with children at my church, and as a Girl Scout leader. We have required teaching training sessions before we can teach, bi-monthly teacher training sessions during the year, online teacher forums, and constant support from our LifeWise Westerville Board. The LifeWise Westerville Board has worked with each individual school on what would work best for pickup and drop-off, and we abide by their wishes. We are very aware that we are guests in your buildings. Our church doors are locked while we are there, and we take the student's safety very seriously. Each class has a teacher and two volunteers, sometimes more. One adult is never alone with a student. This year, I will be teaching first-grade classes, and of course, the lessons will be suitable for their age level. Westerville LifeWise would never tell children they're going to die if they don't believe. Children interpret in their own way, and what goes home or back to school is not always what was said. That is why parents receive weekly emails with the upcoming lessons and follow-up activities so discussion can continue at home. And we are told not to share our personal faith or opinion. The Bible lessons that were presented to the school board as examples were out of context and stopped short of the rest of the story, the true heart of the LifeWise story every week, that Jesus is here to save and love, not to condemn. I ask you to have faith in our Westerville LifeWise Board for their integrity. They have set a very high standard for us as teachers, and they have not nor will they promote anything that would put students at risk. I also ask you to consider your release time decision and how it affects those students of any religions in our multicultural district. I thank you for your time, and I eagerly await your decision.
Thank you. And then next, next up, we have Elise Smith. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Elise Smith. I live at 380 Windermere Drive in Westerville, Ohio. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to take a moment to read from a LifeWise frequently asked question sheet. This is written and published by LifeWise. I'll provide a copy of the page in its entirety to your email. This sheet is for instructors on how to answer tough questions from students. These students are elementary school students, and I really want us to bear that in mind. I have a novel's worth of editorial comment I could add as my reaction to the information below, but I'll think I will let LifeWise speak for itself. Student question, how can I honor my parents, stepparents, grandparents, live-ins who do not follow God? LifeWise answer, we can't expect people who don't love God to follow Him, but we should still be respectful toward them and try to live peacefully with them. When faced with a choice to obey God or our parents, we should obey God first. Student question, my mom's boyfriend lives with us, is that a sin? LifeWise answer, in Genesis 2, God created the first man and woman to have a romantic relationship within the boundaries of marriage. This is His special and best plan. When two people reject God's plan and choose to live together without getting married first, God says it is a sin. Student question, my parents are divorced, did they break God's rules? LifeWise answer, Mark tells us that when two people get married, they are joined together in a very special way. God does not want this bond to be broken apart, but God promises that when we repent and confess our sins, He will forgive us. Student question, what does the Bible say about being in a same-sex relationship? LifeWise answer, God designed the first man and woman to have a loving relationship with one another in marriage. This was and still is God's perfect plan. God's word tells us that anything different from this kind of romantic relationship between a husband and a wife is a sin. Student question, does God hate people in the LGBTQ plus community? LifeWise answer, God loves each person, no matter what they do, but God is also perfect. All sin angers Him and makes Him sad. God wants us to turn away from sin and do what is right. Before I read the last one, I just want everyone to visualize the context. This is a first through fifth grade student asking these questions. The answer is coming from an adult volunteer who is required to only have two years' experience in teaching Sunday School. The parent is not present and was not given any of this ahead of time. Student question, what should God, what would God think if I changed my gender? LifeWise answer, the Bible teaches that God made us male or female. No matter how we feel or how confused we are, we should trust God and respect God's perfect design and how He created us. I will close by saying, in a public Facebook post, LifeWise says it welcomes all students and families regardless of lifestyle, church affiliation, or faith. They go on to say in their Facebook post, if a student asks a question about cultural issues, LifeWise leaders are trained to respond with compassion, humility, and respect. I'm not sure I agree that the answers above exhibit compassion, humility, and respect. I also think it's an enormous overreach for these adult volunteers to be discussing these topics with elementary school children. In addition to this being wildly irresponsible, there's another message I take away from LifeWise's own words. All are welcome, but they are welcome despite and regardless of their differences. The thing I love about Westerville is that differences are celebrated. This does not represent the Westerville I know and love. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Eric Smith.
Hello. How's my volume?
You're fine, welcome.
Thank you to the board for allowing me to speak here tonight. Eric Smith, 380 Windermere Drive, Westerville. I'm a Westerville resident with two small children in Westerville Public Schools. I am a champion of public schooling because I believe that those who dedicate themselves to the education of our youth Eric Smith, 380 Windermere Drive, Westerville. I'm a Westerville resident with two small children and Westerville Public Schools. I am a champion of public schooling because I believe that those who dedicate themselves to the education of our youth are the best of us. I'm not a teacher, but I have teachers in my family, and I have seen firsthand how difficult that job can be and often how thankless it is. So I'd like to thank every employee of the Westerville City School District tonight, the janitors, librarians, art teachers, homeroom teachers, administrative staff, all the way up to the board. What you have chosen as a career path is admirable, and we parents appreciate you. Thank you. I would like to point out that you have repeatedly requested that there is a repeating message to please submit it to you to be read later. They're going to keep coming up here all night with the same copy, paste, wash, reuse statements. I would like to offer a fresh perspective to this narrative. Like I said, I'm not a teacher. I'm an engineer by training, and what is drilled into our heads is design intent. What was the architect intending when they landed on this solution? With that context, I would argue that LifeWise's architect has drawn up a deliberate attempt to manipulate children's social interactions to increase their participation rates in this program. They probably claim that their goal is to reach unchurched children. They take these kids off-campus, depriving students of the benefit of lunch with their peers and recess to teach a curriculum that they're not very excited to show everybody out publicly. All right? In fact, they're embroiled in a lawsuit with the man who published the curriculum, and they're hiding behind patent law. But let me go back to design intent. When I was a child, my favorite days were ones in which I had a doctor's appointment. You want to know why? It's because I knew that I would come back into school with a Happy Meal. All my friends would be jealous. I was the man of the hour, right? That's what these people are doing. They're sending their little red shirts back into schools with tales of candy, ice cream parties, begging their friends to join them. Midday recruitment works best. Send them back to school with a Happy Meal so that the other kids will see and be jealous of. Could they use their red school bus to provide an after-school program that lets children who are already of faith deepen their connection? They could, but they won't. That would not work for the agenda because the design you see is for the kids to be visible at school after riding sugar high on the magic school bus and telling all of their friends about it for the rest of the day. It is all by design as an attempt-
I'm going to ask, I'm sorry, sir, can we please keep the clapping to, um, sorry. Can we refrain from clapping? Thank you.
It's all by design as an attempt to reach out and scoop up as many children as possible by manipulating what kids do best, talking to their friends. It's not a bug in the system, it is the feature of the system. Now let me turn from design intent to risk assessment. Another major part of my field of work is looking out over the scope of a project and assessing the risk involved. When I look at this project of theirs, I find a big red flashing light, a warning sign that there is something that can go wrong, big wrong. Participation in this program can be had through online registration. One of my kids has the biggest case of FOMO I've ever seen. He will never take no for an answer if it's something that his friends are doing. All right? So where does the liability fall if my son signs himself up online, gets on one of their school buses against my knowledge, and God forbid, that school bus gets into a car accident and my son is injured or is dead? All right? Their little registration form has the liability indemnity checked off. They're not liable. Guess where I look next? I look to you guys, and my first question is, how could you let this program go forward? And all of my other questions will come from my lawyers. Finally, how hard did you fight after COVID to get the students back into the school buildings? And now you have this group of people trying to climb over the wall of church and state to drag them back out of your buildings. Don't let them. These people have every evening of the week and two days on the weekends to preach to their masses. Your motto is "Where You Belong." Correct me if I'm wrong, but the "you" is the children, not evangelical proselytizers. They think that they can educate the youth better than you. They don't respect you. You can tell this by how not a single one of them tonight will submit the repeat messaging to be read later. They have no respect for you. These people know that once they are allowed in, they will be exponentially harder to get rid of. So I close on a personal note. If somebody knocked on my door and asked to take my kids away to study something that they won't openly show me, and in the same breath have to explain that the rumors about them being politically affiliated or occult are not true, I would tell them to get off of my property. This is your property. They're knocking on your door. What are you going to do? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to, we have about two and a half hours of public comment here, so I'm just going to ask, if you have nothing new to repeat, just feel free to come up, state your name, your address, and say whether you're for or against, and submit your comments. I do promise they do get read. Next up, we have, I might pronounce this last name wrong, and I'm going to apologize. Scott Zuny? Zun? Zun? Am I close?
You're doing good.
Okay. Welcome. Hopefully you'll state it for us. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Scott Ziney. I respond to anything that starts with Z and sounds remotely close. 377 Delaware Drive. Thank you, members of the board, for your service and for providing this forum to the community. Coming from a deeply concerned parent with a daughter in the Westerville Elementary System, the LifeWise program is not good for the Westerville Public School community. We can listen to testimonies from those affiliated with LifeWise all day, and I'm sure some great individual things would be highlighted. I mean, LifeWise teachers and support of LifeWise. Crazy. But without sitting in on a session, which is not permitted, and I find that to be an enormous red flag, and without the ability to monitor children's interactions across the school day, all we really have to look back at are the last two board meetings to have a clear look at how divisive this program is. Look at what this has brought out in an otherwise tight-knit community. And listen, even if I'm being generous and I give those involved in the program the benefit of the doubt that their intentions are good, the program clearly causes division, which has been evident in this very room. I know we try to safeguard our children, and we think of them as shielded from such vitriol, but they are often smarter and more perceptive than we give them credit for. So to believe this division has not already crept into the schools and does not impact children's relationships, actions, judgments, and sense of belonging is just naive. The division is unnecessary and can be remedied by removing LifeWise as any part of a public student's school standard day. I heard several LifeWise advocates voice last meeting that LifeWise was a choice and we could simply choose not to participate in the program. But to rebut that, I already chose to have my child attend a school with no religious affiliation when I made the choice for them to attend a public school. If you believe wholesome values need to, for whatever reason, be anchored to Christianity or a certain religion, don't you have the choice to send your children to a Christian school or a private school? From what I've witnessed from my daughter and her two years in the Westerville Public School System, you guys are doing a fantastic job, all on your own, instilling positive values, fostering inclusivity, providing diverse educational options, and developing strong personal character for my child. So thank you. It's appreciated. One speaker from last meeting really bothered me when they compared rights granted via the RTRI guidelines, and this was the one in which these allowed students who celebrate Ramadan to be excused from school activities for a religious observance, mind you, in private and not advertised. And they compared that to the LifeWise rights to continue utilizing a mechanized recruiting machine with branded red buses, shirts, treats, et cetera, no doubt purposed to apostulate and indoctrinate young students to one certain set of religious beliefs. blatant false equivalency. I mean, this is, at best, laughable and, at worst, incredibly concerning. If those affiliated with LifeWise are as passionate and dedicated as they portray in these meetings, then please take your energy and focus it in the programs that can happen outside of or are totally disassociated with the public school system. Run the programs outside of school hours or work towards making this a standalone private school. Take this out of the public's hands. In closing, thank you again to the board for listening. I beg you to please discontinue any affiliation with this organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mary Jean Botler? Botler?
Mary Jean Botler.
Okay.
6546 Haddon Place West, Westerville. Members of the board, Superintendent, I am Mary Jean Botler, retired Presbyterian pastor who lives in Anheuser and volunteers in the Anheuser Elementary School. I'm a lifelong supporter of public education and teachers' union, as is the denomination that I have served for 40 years. For 12 years, I served on the board of Westminster John Knox Press, one of the most respected religious publishers in this country. In fact, I chaired that board. The publishing house's newest children's imprint, Fly Away Books, is an award-winning collaboration of top biblical scholars and academically-trained Christian educators. This is all to suggest that I know something about good children's curriculum and can identify toxic children's curriculum. I would place LifeWise curriculum in the category of toxic theology. I have grave concerns about embedding that curriculum into the public school day, what that means for the mental health and well-being of children under your care. I listened to the public comments last time online. Many parents offered anecdotes about their children's enjoyment of LifeWise. Of course, every religious program, from the most egregious to the most respected, can offer such anecdotes. We all speak well of groups in which we are engaged. However, the responsibility of the Board of Education is to look beyond those comments and connect the dots. Let me share how I began to connect those dots. I was making muffins one day. My earphones were, or earpods were in, and I was listening to C-SPAN's Book TV on which authors appear promoting their latest book. This day's guest was new to me. His name was Corey DeAngelis, and I soon learned that his passion was advocating against teachers' unions and what he called "government schools." He promotes the abolishment of the Department of Education and is a strong supporter of public money vouchers being funded to private schools. Same line that I have heard many times, nothing new to see here. However, my ears perked up when he began to talk about the way in which public schools were indoctrinating children, and those children were growing into adults who were politically active. He pointed out that only a small portion of students were in private education, and therefore, there was a great need to reach children in the public schools before they could be indoctrinated with woke ideas. He somewhat gleefully described the loophole many had found in the RTRI law. It opened up a new, and these are his words, "A new mission field," the same language and approach used by LifeWise and promoted by its funders. Now what does this all tell us? This is not about character education, although I would contend that what LifeWise teaches has little to do with character. Anheuser Elementary is teaching character education. It's just not the kind of loving and inclusive character traits that LifeWise's narrative view of the world endorses, narrow view of the world endorses. This is not about character education. It's not even about religious education. That could be done after school, that can be done on the weekend. It is about political power. It's about supplement, it's not about supplementing what the school is teaching. It is about replacing public education in this country. When I visited the LifeWise offices to learn more about the curriculum, I asked the president what public school his children attended. No surprise, his children are not in public schools. I would wager that most of those who design and benefit financially from this business model do not have children in the public school. My admonition, play in your own sandbox and leave our children and our public schools alone. You have a plethora of religious schools in which you are free to promote your wares. The Westerville Board of Education is the only thing that stands between our schools and the political agenda of those who would, and I quote, and this is my final quote, "weaponize race, identity, and faith to dehumanize and endanger vulnerable marginalized communities and dismantle public education." These attacks are rooted in white supremacy values.
Botler, your time is up, I'm sorry. Thank you for being able to- Next up is Rick Nutt. Oh, you already knew. Welcome.
Thank you. Members of the board, my name is Rick Nutt, 65 Haddon Place West. I'm Professor Emeritus of Religion at Muskingham University. My field is U.S. religious history, and I'm here to speak to the question of the LifeWise Release Time for Religious Instruction, or RTRI, program. This is only a matter of church-state separation in a peripheral way. For good or ill, the Supreme Court declared RTRI programs constitutional. That's not really a matter about which we need to debate here. More, in one sense, is what LifeWise teaches theologically a matter for your concern to approve or disapprove of the theology of religious teaching in such a program as beyond any government entity's purview. However, if that religious instruction contradicts the values the district promotes and disrupts community in the schools, for instance, if it denies the value of all religions or the affirmation of all gender identities, then the school board may want to deny the program. The only constitutional question would be if, in fact, school personnel play a role in promoting or supporting student participation in LifeWise in any way beyond what is necessary to allow the children to take part in it. That would be unconstitutional, and such support or promotion would be important information for you to have. My concern goes in another direction. I have seen some LifeWise curriculum, approximately 10 lesson plans, and I'm convinced that some of what is taught is in contradiction to what students are taught in Westerville schools. For instance, one lesson plan dealt with the creation of the universe in the Book of Genesis. The creation of the world was taught in a literal way, emphasizing what was created on each of the six days of creation. An activity for the students was then to match various items, say trees, humans, stars, with the day on which they were made. One choice was to identify the day on which T-Rexes were created. I assume, I hope, that no science teacher in our schools ignores the accepted understanding of evolution and that none teaches a scientific view in which dinosaurs and humans existed at the same time in history. This is just one example of a contradiction between the LifeWise and Westerville curricula of which I'm aware. I've heard references to the quality of the curriculum. I can assure you that a biblical approach which does not acknowledge that there are two creation stories in the Book of Genesis would not be accepted by biblical faculty in our best theological institutions. There's another matter I would raise. Should LifeWise continue in the Westerville schools and eventually grow into the middle and high schools? I'm concerned that when dealing with U.S. history, the students might be taught a basic idea of Christian nationalism. That is, that the United States was founded as a Christian nation and should return to its Christian roots. The understanding of the role of religion in our nation's founding is complex, and it requires a great deal of nuance as religion related to secular and cultural and political factors in the colonies and our new nation. But it is never correct simply to assert that our nation was founded as a Christian nation or that Christianity should have priority in our national life in any way. There are other important elements to this question that you've heard. I have chosen here, as I leave others with more expertise as educators, to address those other issues. I wanted to put before you my concern about an area in which I think I'm qualified to speak. Thank you for your time and for your hard work.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tobias Gordon.
And just a reminder, if you have nothing new to add, feel free to come up, state your name, your address, support or against, and just hand your comments to Mr. Dorn. Welcome.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I'm here today to ask that you fully rescind the district's release time for religious instruction policy. I spoke here at the last Board of Education meeting requesting that you adjust the policy. I'm sorry, I forgot. Tobias Gordon, 6688 Collingwood Drive, Westerville, Ohio 43082. I spoke here at the last board meeting requesting that you adjust the policy due to concerns I had with LifeWise's proselytism- I had with Life Wise's proselytizing, damn, that word is hard, proselytizing and intentional coercion of students with the false appearance of school sponsorship. While those concerns remain valid, after further research, I have taken a stronger position regarding RTRI. There is no way that RTRI cannot cause deleterious effects to the instruction of students, whether they opt in or out. The school day simply has no time for this type of regular disruption. Every class, core and special, lunch and recess, all have well-documented, proven benefits to students. School curricula and the entire school day is valuable by design. The value of school lunch and recess cannot be overstated. These provide well-researched benefits in the areas of, among others, improved academic performance, socialization skills, improved attention in the classroom, and important nutrition. The American Academy of Pediatrics policy statement, "The Crucial Rule of Recession in School," which they reaffirmed last year, states that safe and well-supervised recess offers cognitive, social, emotional, and physical benefits that may not be fully appreciated when a decision is made to diminish it. A 2023 study, "The Educational Outcomes of Recession in Elementary Schoolchildren," a mixed methods systematic review by Howie et alia, suggests positive benefits for behavior and either positive or null benefits of recess on academic achievement. A 2022 systematic review, "How Elementary-In-School Play Opportunities Relate to Academic Achievement and Social-Emotional Well-Being Systematic Review," by Burston and Castelli, found that student behavior and social-emotional outcomes improve when recess is incorporated. I could go on, but I want to call your attention to one specific study. Life Wise claims similar benefits for their RTRI program, but their evidence consists of a single study sponsored by Ambassador Enterprises LLC, which is, per their website, "a missionally-aligned team that invests in four-income and four-impact markets for financial, cultural, and eternal," that's my emphasis, "returns." They are a legacy-minded, private equity firm investing to glorify God. In other words, entirely biased in the outcome of this study. A cursory review of the study report available on Life Wise's website reveals a number of issues in the analysis, including, as far as I can tell, the conflation of grade levels when comparing benefits of reduction in behavioral issues. I strongly encourage you to look closer at this, if it is part of your analysis in consideration. The logistical overhead of RTRI is an undue burden for teachers and staff. With one organization requiring the pulling out of a subset of students, management of departure and return attendance, and many other factors, it can be nothing but disruptive. The logistical equivalent of a field trip on a weekly basis is a significant use of district resources. The overhead and disruption will increase with the addition of each extra organization requesting released time. There are other organizations in the Columbus area using released time. Think of the impact of two, three, six organizations at a single school. That would require an absolutely untenable amount of school district resources and be a major disruption to learning. I, for one, want my teachers and staff focused on instruction, not worried about getting their kids to religious instruction which should be performed after school. There are 8,760 hours in one year, and a child only spends a minimum of 910 of them in school. That leaves over 7,500 hours for parents to fill their child's life with religious teachings. They do not need to take another 36 hours away from teaching by trained professionals. Please rescind the release time for religious instruction policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Roger Walken. I think that's an N. Roger Walken?
Walker.
Is it an N?
Walker.
Walker, oh, sorry.
I bet.
It's okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to address the School Board, Board of Education. Unlike some of my previous individuals, I learned about this meeting about two hours ago, so I don't come prepared with a litany of things to say. I raised all four of my children, excuse me, I reside at 6884 Meadow Glen Drive, South Westerville. Raised four children in the Westerville school system, have the greatest respect for the knowledge and experience they had there, and I appreciate what the Westerville City Schools has done for my family. I don't have a lot of data, other than to say that Life Wise has been a blessing to our family. They have grown because of demand across the United States, the 550 schools. In a few short years, states have approved the Life Wise curriculum as they must and should implement in many of the school systems, Indiana and other states. There's been tremendous confidence in the Life Wise curriculum and how it's managed. I implore you to consider prayerfully the fact that this kind of education is not disruptive, is done out of love and out of concern for every student in all of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about two more hours of public comments, so I'm just going to ask again, remind you if you have nothing new to add, please feel free to just come up and state your name, and whether you support or not. Next up is Gianna Amadio, am I correct?
Amadio.
Amadio, my apologies. Welcome.
My name is Gianna Amadio. I am a fifth-grade student at Hanby Elementary. I live at 359 Wildwood Drive. And I have been looking forward to going to Life Wise since the last lesson in April, and I know a lot of other students have too. Some people are telling you to, like, get rid of Life Wise, and by getting rid of it, you're getting rid of one of the most fun parts of our day. As a fifth grader, I know everyone is told that they would be able to go all through elementary school. A lot of students are expecting that promise to be kept. I heard people talking against Life Wise, and someone said that they thought that kids who go to Life Wise like me were bullies, and that hurt. Saying that kids who go, saying that kids like me who believe in Jesus are mean and violent is such, it's kind of sad. Another person said that Life Wise talked about LGBTQ, but we've never had a discussion about that. I also want to make something clear. As a Life Wise student, I know from experience that we did not get candy, so I'm not sure why people are complaining about that. I heard people talking badly about Life Wise, and they didn't even have kids in a Life Wise school yet, so that didn't really seem fair. At Life Wise, we do a lot of, like, really fun stuff. We still get to talk to our friends during lunch, and then we watch a video about the Bible story we're learning about that day. We also have a recess where we get to play fun games about the lesson, and then, if we have time, other games too. There isn't anything bad about that. About the whole safety issue, every day when we go to the church, someone always has to use a key or something to get us in, just like at school, where we're very clearly safe. Life Wise should be the parent's choice, not the choice of other people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Keith Walker. Welcome.
I'm Keith Walker, 5499 Lakeshore Avenue, Westerville, Ohio. I'm a Westerville resident, taxpayer, and a graduate of Westerville City Schools. Thank you very much. Loved all my teachers, loved my principals. I truly appreciate the Westerville City School system. I just wanted to make a couple points. I didn't have really time to prepare, but I really appreciated the child that just spoke, and just spoke from her heart, and I just want to second that. And I think I would have felt the same way if I had that opportunity back then. I'm a lot older now, of course. One of the comments, though, I wanted to make was, I am a Westerville, I'm a taxpayer, and I pay a lot of taxes, and we, a lot of folks can't afford to put their kids in private schools, and it's just, I just wanted to call out that this opportunity, just once a week, this opportunity is such a wonderful thing. It's a small thing, it seems, but it's a big thing for these kids and for some of these parents, and it's a great opportunity. And if they can't afford, if parents cannot afford to put their children into a private school, and even if they do, they still have to pay taxes that go to the public school. So it's very expensive to get double taxed. You pay taxes to the school system, and you have to come up with a payment for the private school. So that's one point that I thought is important, and it's a great way to mitigate that by letting their children still be benefiting from the Westerville school system, and if they choose, they can let their child to be part of this program. The second thing is, we always talk about choice, 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 and this is a choice. It's optional. And I think that it's important that if a parent and a child, they don't want to be involved in the program, it's fine. And if they do, it's a wonderful opportunity, and I really, really wish that I would have had this opportunity when I was going to the schools here. And thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you. And next, we have Becky Medley. Welcome.
Thank you for the Opportunity Board. My name is Becky Medley. I live at 15815 Needles Road in Johnstown, but I am the Student Minister at Westerville Christian Church and have been on staff there for over 20 years now. We were one of the locations for Life Wise Academy last school year, and I speak for our church to let you know that we believe that the policy of release time for religious instruction is a really important issue for our community. I think we can all agree on that tonight. The RTRI policy represents a commitment to nurturing the spiritual development of our children and upholding the values that help shape our kids into being kind and compassionate citizens in our community. Life Wise curriculum complements the moral and ethical foundations that are vital for personal growth, but also social responsibility. And by integrating faith-based education into the school week, we can help students develop a sense of purpose, compassion, and integrity through faith in God. RTRI lets parents make that choice for their children. I can speak for the faith community that I'm a part of at Westerville Christian that we want to walk alongside the public school to care for the children in Westerville. I see that we're on the same team. Last school year, I volunteered two hours a week in one of our middle schools mentoring students and helping with schoolwork, and just this morning, I dropped off my application so that I could do that again this year. Our church provides weekend meals for over 120 Westerville school families, as well as school supplies and gifts at Christmas time. Our church is alive and active in Westerville and wants to partner for the well-being of our students. We are committed to showing that there is hope in this world, not just with lip service, but in practice. Hosting Life Wise Academy was just another opportunity for us to love the students of Westerville. Life Wise is a beautiful way for the schools and faith communities of our town to come together, to impact our students in the areas of mental health, character development, academic achievement, and social integrity. Life Wise and the parents who choose it celebrate our freedom of religion and choice. Isn't that what we all want for our kids? In advocating for Life Wise Academy, we are not seeking to strong-arm everyone to our way of thinking or force any political agenda, but rather to offer an option for those who wish to incorporate their faith into their education. It's about providing choices and honoring the diverse needs of our community. If we have any agenda at all, it is to love God and love people in all walks of life. The goal of Life Wise, as well as the example of Jesus Christ, is not to indoctrinate, discriminate, or alienate, but to serve all people in love. So I urge the school board on behalf of the local church to consider the benefits of release time for religious instruction, and by doing so, we can stand by our commitment to the well-being and growth of our children, giving them the opportunity to thrive both academically and spiritually. Together, we can bring more passion, more service to families, and a lot more hope into the community that we all love so much. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Mary Franco. Mary Franco? Welcome.
Good evening, Board. My name is Mary Franco. I live at 606 Retreat Lane North in Powell, and I just wanted to share a little bit about my perspective. Having worked for Life Wise, I am a public school teacher, worked 20 years for Olin Tangi, and prior to that, 17 years in inner-city Los Angeles. And I was asked to volunteer for Life Wise for Olin Tangi. I knew nothing about the program, stepped in, and I just wanted to share my perspective. In Olin Tangi, this is my third year. The first year, we had about 56 students enroll. The second year, it was about 250. And then this past, this upcoming year, we have over 400, 470-some students enrolled. And I would just really encourage you to do, to perhaps visit a Life Wise class, because, like these other folks said, it is really a very joyful classroom atmosphere. The children are introduced to God and the Bible, they learn scripture, and they walk away, they are delighted. And when you hear this, you heard this young lady in fifth grade, we just graduated about 12 fifth graders last year. It was a glorious celebration. The children love it, the parents love it. I am in the public schools all the time. I have friends that are teaching currently and talk about the changes that they see in these students coming back into the school. And I could go on about those stories, but it has had a very, very positive effect on the students, on the parents, and in the school classrooms themselves. So I would very much encourage you to think positively about your decision that you have to make, because it is a fantastic program that really does benefit those who choose to take part. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have two more pages left, and I'm wondering if, nobody has anything, I'm going to invite, if you have other things to say that hasn't been said yet, to do so, but I am going to ask if things have already been said that you've already, that you might want to say, and you are in support of Life Wise, if maybe we could just stand up, and then we can note that and sit down, and those that are against could stand up and sit down. But, okay. Next up, we have Nicole Elliott. Welcome.
President Meyer, members of the School Board, Superintendent Hamburg, I'm Nicole Elliott, and I live at 396 Wincroft Drive. And I will be brief, for the sake of everything you've been saying. So I'm addressing you as a Westerville resident, parent with a student in the Westerville schools, and also a Life Wise teacher. I'm an Ohio Department of Education elementary license holder with a Master's of Education degree in Curriculum and Instruction, and 20 years of teaching experience. During the 2324 school year, I had the privilege and honor of teaching about two dozen Westerville Elementary School students in grades one through four, whose parents chose to enroll them in Life Wise Academy. I personally taught over 100 Life Wise classes, so I'm qualified to share my firsthand experience of what actually takes place in the classroom. Many of those accusations have been circulated about Life Wise recently, so I would like to share the truth of what our program really is. We are absolutely not political, we have absolutely zero political agenda. We don't coerce or bribe students in any way. Life Wise highly values student safety and well-being. From the time we pick the students up in the school office to the time we return them safely an hour later, the students are loved appropriately, cared for well, listened to thoroughly, and challenged to learn about and exhibit moral characteristics, such as honesty, kindness, and respect. This is accomplished in an encouraging and uplifting way, never through shaming, judgment, or unkindness in any form. We, as Life Wise teachers, strive to embody extravagant love, kindness, and patience, and set a positive moral example of how to live in a world that is ripe with negativity and unkind words. We talk about ways students can practice these character traits, such as learning to forgive a sibling or a friend when they do something hurtful, or learning how to show respect to parents and teachers. show respect to parents and teachers by listening and obeying, learning how to show compassion by helping others who are hurting. We honor student creativity and the unique ways that God has created each one. We are coming alongside and supporting the same kinds of traits school districts throughout the country are striving to impart to their students. Students in our program have expressed how LifeWise is a place where they feel loved and accepted, a bright spot in their school week. On several occasions, in my personal experience, a student would arrive in the office at LifeWise pickup time after having a difficult morning, for whatever reason. During the course of our class, their mood would begin to lighten as they engaged with the caring adults and their peers. They were encouraged, they experienced prayer, they learned about the love of Jesus, and they had fun playing games. By the end of class, these same children would have a complete mood shift because they felt seen, known, and supported. So whatever is underlying this opposition to LifeWise, let us agree to discuss and work through the problems, so that students in Westerville, whose parents choose to enroll them, can continue to benefit from this incredible opportunity. Please don't take this important option away from our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alexandria Garretson. My apologies, I think I butchered it.
No problem. It's Garretson. So Alexandra Garretson, I'm at 7781 Crest Drive in Westerville. I have that in my comments today and have also emailed them to you, so I will not read my entire thing. An interest in time. I have two children that attend Mark Twain Elementary School. They were, up until a few minutes ago, in the overflow warrant room and were quite hurt to be called white supremacists during this meeting. My little son has participated in the White LifeWise Academy for several years, and my youngest will be participating for the first time this year. I'm very disheartened by your decision to consider suspension, as these classes are a wonderful opportunity for my children to connect with other Christians in our community and learn valuable character lessons with a basis in Scripture and with no interruption to their instructional time. It hasn't been mentioned today, so I would like to bring it up. The U.S. Supreme Court has ruled in 1952 in the case Zurich versus Clausen that instructional programs like LifeWise are fully within the confines of the Constitution. Removing this right, because some in our community would prefer that we don't offer it, is a violation of my rights. I respectfully ask that you keep the RTRI policy in place and make no changes. Thank you.
Next up is Sherri Goss. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. My name is Sherri Goss. I live at 6360 Thrasher Loop in Westerville. I live there with my husband of 10 years, Brian, and my seven-year-old son, Henry, who attends Hanby Elementary School. Last year, our then-first grader came home from school with printed LifeWise material in his backpack. He had been recruited, or attempted to be recruited, by other students in his class. He sees the right, the bright red bus as a field trip and wants to understand why some children get to go on a field trip once a week, that not all kids get to go. We have spent the last seven years, as parents, teaching him to look for similarities in himself and in others. When we ask, when he first asked us about a child who was in a wheelchair for the first time, I pointed out all the things that he and that child had in common, and all the things that that child could do, just like him. And when he asked about people of different skin color, I pointed out that we all look different, but we all have so many similarities. Despite what the LifeWise representatives tell us their intentions are, this program is divisive in our school classrooms, it's divisive in our communities, and you see it here. The topic of LifeWise is not something that many parents want to bring up in conversations at birthday parties because it's, or picnics, because it's a hot topic. It has come up, however, in a few discussions that I've witnessed, and from my experience, the majority of Hanby parents do not like this program at all. In fact, we all feel like this program somehow snuck in the back door, and the parents did not have any say about it. Luckily, only three or four of my son's classmates participated in LifeWise last year. The lack of participation is an indication on how parents really feel about it. I have attended the last two School Board meetings. In fact, they were the first School Board meetings I've ever attended. At the last meetings, just like this one, there were a lot of red shirts in the room. I can't help but wonder how many of the people who are wearing them are actually a current parent or guardian of a Westerville City School District student. That's all I have to share. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Jessica Geller. Welcome. I'm sure if I said it wrong, you'll, okay, correct me.
Thank you very much, Superintendent and Vice Superintendent and President of the Board, for allowing me to speak for a moment. My name is Jessica Geller. I am eighth-generation Delaware County. My great-great-grandfather graduated from Westerville, and I live in Sundbury, Ohio, at 189 Lutz Avenue. I just wanted to tell you how wonderful LifeWise is and seed the rest of my time, and I hope that you continue to keep it as a part of the adoption of policy for the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I think this is an, oh, so I'm sorry, Kathy Bowler. Is that right? Okay. Welcome.
Good evening. I'll keep my comments brief. I'm Kathy Bowler, 6671 Meadow Glen Drive South in Westerville. President Meyer, Board members, Superintendent Hamburg, thank you for continuing to work hard for our students, for our families, and for considering all the input that you've received tonight. I'm here to support LifeWise, and I ask that you continue to support it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jeff Harrison. Welcome.
My name is Jeff Harrison, 497 Blue Heron Court. It's the first time doing this, so bear with me, please. Actually, I'm going to cut mine in about half as well, just to, you know, take your time. I think everyone in this room can agree that some of the most important questions in life is like, why are we here? What's the meaning of life? What happens when we die? These are not questions that any scientist or school can answer. However, as philosopher Metshana Dilwey said, "Where science ends, faith begins." We as Christians know that we have the answers to these questions through our faith in God. For these and many other reasons, I've enrolled my daughter in LifeWise Academy. LifeWise gives our kids a chance to grow in the understanding of their faith, which is an opportunity that I and many other parents want them to have. To be sure, public education is great and gives our kids wonderful experiences and knowledge that they'll have for the rest of their lives. I went to Olentangie, back when there was only one Olentangie, and the things I learned and many of the friends I've made are still with me to this day. However, public education does not provide our kids with the knowledge of the Bible that we as Christians want them to have, and once a week on Sunday only goes so far. LifeWise gives our kids the opportunity to grow in their faith while also not sacrificing any of the school learning that they receive daily. We as parents are responsible for teaching our kids about what we believe, for sure, but with the busy schedules that modern life now requires, it often leaves just a little bit of time to talk to our kids about these things. Thus, LifeWise helps us as parents keep our kids learning about God without having to constantly struggle to find the time to do so. LifeWise works within the framework of our kids' school schedules and does not interfere with any part of the school day. They take the bus to a local church, which happens to be the church that I go to, where they get Sunday School-like instruction for a few minutes once a week, and then they come back to school after the time recess is over. I really don't see how anyone at all could see the harm in that, especially when it's completely voluntary and only those who want to go will go. Every other teacher, student, and parent at the school is completely unaffected. Westerville Schools and its families lose nothing by LifeWise being a part of the community, but those of us who choose to make our, make it a part of our kids' education have only to gain from it, as far as we're concerned. If you do not want your children to go to participate in LifeWise, that's fine, and I certainly respect your decision. I would ask, however, that as a parent, you extend to my family and others the same courtesy who want their children to be able to seek the answers to life's most important questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jaclyn Fraley. Welcome.
Okay, are you ready for it? I would like to speak to the policy changes on Policy 5112. Hold your fluffs. My daughter is a very bright student. She is not a young Sheldon, but it has been noted by her pediatrician and preschool teachers to be gifted. Her birthday is October 26th. We were not able to enroll her last year in kindergarten, even though all of her teachers had stated she was beyond ready for kindergarten, because her birthday is October 26th. While she is bright, she likely would not have passed the early entrance test, which is very rigorous, and basically requires a student to know most of what they would learn in kindergarten before kindergarten. I was lucky our preschool had an accredited kindergarten program, and we were able to progress her according to her educational needs, and she was ready and well-prepared and is now a five-year-old first grader at Hanby. I feel moving the date back will cause harm to bright children who are turning five between August 1st and September 30th. August and September are the top most common birth months. I should know because I deliver babies for a living, and this mama is tired. This change would affect a large number of those children. This would affect parents who have ready their children for kindergarten years in advance. Please don't move the date back and force other parents who have very bright children to face the challenging tests that their children wouldn't be able to pass. Last year, we were cut off because my daughter's birthday was 26 days late. Now, sorry, onto LifeWise. I would like to address comments made at the last meeting and in today, repeating that no one has seen bullying at LifeWise. We never said it was happening at LifeWise. It is sometimes happening later in the school days, and it's not always outright bullying. It is microaggressions. The microaggressions with students coming back and discussing what sin is and what happens to those who sin. LifeWise says it doesn't happen because it wasn't reported to them. They are denying the lived experience of children who either briefly attended, or parents of children who are bullied for not attending. Bullying and such aggressions are rarely brought to school administration, unless it's parents bringing them to LifeWise themselves. When bullying happens, we do what all mothers and parents do. We comfort our children, reinforce their internal magic, and tell them they are smart, they are brave, they are kind, they are beautiful, and their family is also. Just because it's not reported doesn't mean it's not occurring, and the parents who are speaking on behalf of their children should be believed. Again, there are 8,760 hours in a year. Our children will only spend 900 of those, learning and being educated, in the Westerville Schools. That leaves 7,860 hours of the year for parents to fill their children's life with religions, for Christians, a deep love and life focused on Jesus. Do they really need 36 more hours? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Jury. I'm just going to remind everybody, if you have nothing new to add, feel free to just state your name, your address, and say whether you support or against. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Jury. I live at 571 Apple Street, and I'm the Program Director of LifeWise Westerville. Just want to speak again to say thank you to the Board and the Superintendent for your hard work since the last School Board meeting on August 26th, when the policy for religious release time instruction was suspended. We appreciate the time that you've spent. In those two weeks, I just would like to just quickly reiterate the things that LifeWise also has done, and just highlighting the fact that most of the RTRI policies are not even being called into question with how LifeWise has complied with those over the past two years. Our program is conducted off-district property, only with parents' permission. We maintain attendance records and consistently make those available to the district. So I know the two main questions that the Board and the Superintendent raised at the last meeting were surrounding the question of liability and also the question of student consumption of school-provided lunches off-campus. So in regards to the question of liability, I just want to say that LifeWise has decided to remove the Parent Release of Reliability waiver from all LifeWise permission forms. This went into effect last week, so hopefully that will help clear up any questions about liability, since LifeWise does assume liability for all students in our care. And as has been mentioned, we have proposed signing a memorandum of understanding with the district, just to clarify any other liability questions or details, so we are happy to continue to discuss that. Since LifeWise students attend during lunch and recess, they don't miss any core curriculum, transportation is entirely the responsibility of LifeWise or the student's parent or guardian, and of course, again, liability is assumed by LifeWise during that transportation. No district funds are expended for the conducting, conducting of LifeWise programming, so I understand the question in response to the reimbursement for off-site consumption of lunches. So in regards to that, I just want to clarify that the ODEW does have an active notice on their website, which clearly indicates that meals will be reimbursed, but I know there are some lingering concerns, so I just want to reassure the Board and the district that LifeWise will be happy to do whatever is necessary to make sure that every student receives a nutritious meal while they're at their program, so that if that means us reimbursing the school for meals, or helping provide meals that, for students that need those, or encouraging families to pack those if they're able, I just want to reiterate that questions about lunch reimbursement are not a reason to suspend RTRI policy. We're happy to continue to make that, that question and address that as needed. Additionally, I just want to remind the Board that the district RTRI policy, which echoes the state policy, states that staff members shall not promote or discourage participation in release time programs for any religious instruction program, and that nothing should constitute an endorsement of religion or infringe upon an individual's First Amendment rights. Since release time religious instruction is by its very definition religious in its content, we understand and would never expect that every student or family or community member would agree with the particularly specific religious teachings of our particular program. That's why participation in any RTRI policy is always optional and always a matter of parents' choice. We also understand that it is not up to the Board to determine the content of any RTRI program. That, again, is a matter of parents' choice. If that aligns with their family, they're welcome to participate. For this reason, it's our expectation that the members of the Board would render any further policy decisions regarding RTRI based on facts that have been presented about our compliance with the policy, rather than succumbing to the influence of individuals or special interest groups that have expressed their own personal disagreement with the content of one particular program. Since all of the Board's previously stated questions and concerns about LifeWise compliance seem to have been addressed, and because we haven't been notified of any other questions, we're excited to hear that the RTRI policy will go back into effect at the conclusion of this meeting. Continued suspension of the RTRI policy would be construed as a means to discourage students' participation in religious programs and might infringe upon students' First Amendment rights. So again, we reiterate that we're happy to work with you to clear up any further questions that remain, and we look forward to continuing to work with the students in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have about 40 more minutes of public comment here, so I'm just going to say, if you want to just come up and state your name and his address and whether you support or not, feel free to do so. James Harrison. Welcome.
Sorry it took me so long. My name is James Harrison. I live at 7160 Jaclyn Court, Westerville. I'm also the National Director of the Natural Family Foundation. I want to cut to the chase in terms of tonight's meeting, which you've heard all the speakers. There's two sides here. One is a Christian side, and the other is a secular humanist side. And that's what you're hearing, and that's what it all boils down to. You've got man's wisdom versus the Bible. And the problem is, what's right and what's wrong, right? That's what, that's what you have to decide. And I learned a long time ago, I was, I was one of those old Bible pastors. I had all these questions about this and that and the other, and somebody asked me one time, said, "Well, what would it take for you to believe the Bible?" And I said, and I thought, okay, 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 the Bible is the inherent word of God. All I need to do is get in there, find one error, and I'm out of here. And I figured, what, two hours later, right? Two days later? Two weeks later? Two months later? Six months later? And what I was doing is I would take a piece of the Bible, and I would compare it to what I would see in nature. And what I learned is that there are natural laws. There are physical laws, and there are spiritual laws. I could jump out the window here and identify as I'm not going to I could jump out the window here and identify as, "I'm not going to fall, but I'm going to fall." A child needs a mother and a father, one each. And if you don't believe that, go to the prison systems and ask them about that. I see some shaking of heads and I understand that. Again, we're in a battle between secular humanism and Christianity. How are you going to determine what's right and what's wrong? And I would say that having Christianity in the school is not a bad idea. And by the way, Christianity and secular humanism are both religions. In 1961, the Supreme Court made that decision. Just for your information. So we've got two religions at war here. One religion that has control of schools, which is secular humanism, and the other, Christianity, wants to expose the kids to a little bit of that. I pray that this school, Board, members, teachers, take that in consideration because if you invite Christianity out, you're going to create a vacuum and God help you when you let something else in. Thank you very much.
Next up is Dan Carey.
My name is Dan Carey. I live at 106 Whisperwood Court. I understand we're having some time. I'll try to make my comments brief. Board and the Superintendent, thank you for letting us do this. I want to tell you how much I appreciate and I'm sure your efforts in running this Westerville school system. I am not a lawyer. I am not a theologian. I've never even read the entire Bible. I'm not an engineer, but I am a father of a daughter that went through 12 years of Westerville Schools and we were pleased with all of that. I'm also, last of all, grandfather. And my grandson is at Emerson. Go Turtles. And we're very pleased with the program. My pastor in Sunbury told me about LifeWise. As a matter of fact, this year, our church will host LifeWise for the first time there in Sunbury. So I decided to investigate, although I don't have degrees of all this, I'm not even an educator. But I am the president of our church's Sunday School and I have taught Sunday School most of my adult life. I have seen LifeWise Academy's program. I've seen their agenda. I've gone to three other informational meetings and gone on two bus rides in two classes and I find nothing to justify what I've heard tonight and at the last Board meeting. And in finalizing my comments, I had the opportunity today to pick up my grandson. He goes to Hanby for the after-school. He's in third grade. What a character. I love him immensely. I've decided to volunteer for LifeWise this year and I asked my daughter to enroll him. He's enrolled. If there was a problem with his program, would I allow my grandson, whom I love, who goes to Sunday School and Vacation Bible School, would I let him do this? Would I be that stupid? And today, when I picked him up, we got talking and he brought up LifeWise. He thought he was going to be in the program tomorrow. It breaks my heart to say no. And no, I'm not even sure I can tell him he'll be in the program at all. If I'm hearing correctly, you're going to kick that can down the road and I'm not happy about that. I want you to work with us. Work with Jennifer, as she just mentioned earlier. He also showed me something I want to share with you all, last of all. Emerson Student Council application. It says at the very top, "Would you like to make a difference in the world?" Well, there's a question. Maybe LifeWise could answer that, too. "Do you like to work hard?" That's a good question. "Do you strive to promote and good citizenship by example?" I wonder if LifeWise would help in that. "Do you want to be a part of a positive team and meet new people?" He wants to be a student of LifeWise and he wants to be in student council. That's the kind of little guy he's going to be. And I pray that he will be the good man he needs to be because he's gone to Sunday School, Vacation Bible School, and LifeWise Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Debra Redbert. I think those are ours.
Thank you. You all have been very patient. My name is Debra Egybert, 265 West Fountain. That's in Delaware. But I have been involved, actually, when we moved to the Delaware area, I had lived in four different countries for about an equal amount of time, about 14 years each, so you can calculate how old I am. And that was 14 years ago, if you really want to add it all up. So I have experienced a number of school systems, as you might have imagined. In fact, the first one that I experienced was as a student in Japan in a Japanese public school, elementary school. And later, an American public school and a couple of boarding schools. And then with my daughter, we were overseas in England. She went to English public school and later to an international school in France. Actually, it was in Switzerland. We lived in France, but drove across the border for the International Baccalaureate. And I have tutored math at various points and actually taught English national curriculum math in France in a French public school. So I have a fairly wide range of different educational experiences. And I am well aware that the culture of a school makes a huge difference in how kids learn, what they learn, and the kind of person they become. And what I see here, which has been remarked upon by several people already, but, you know, what we're looking at here is essentially a culture war. You know, there are two belief systems. These are belief systems, both of them. There is no factually, what can you say, proof that there is no God, which is basically what one side is saying, you know?
That's not what we're saying.
Okay, okay. Please let her talk.
Okay. Well, let's just say it's very much, pretty much, a secular, you know, secular humanist. It's, we're not, we don't want to include the concept of a Creator and the things that flow from that. But to a child, these things are critical. As one of the fathers mentioned, you know, your concept of who you are as a person, what is the meaning of life, what is the purpose of your life? All of these things flow from who you think you are. And who is going to tell you that? This is not something that you should just create out of whole cloth. You know, this is something that generally, parents pass on to their children. We teach them what we believe to be true about the world and what we believe their, where their life comes from, what their responsibilities are, and so on. So that is my comment. And, you know, this is absolutely crucial. And I think when you see the incredible epidemic that we have now of children who are anxious, depressed, suicidal, and so on, you know, this is not coming because they believe in an angry God. This is coming because they are lost. They have lost their sense of who they are. They don't know why they're there and people are telling them all kinds of different things. So I would like, you know, I want to encourage you to follow some of your, you know, on your website, you have all kinds of things like inclusiveness. Every person should have an equal opportunity to access and participate in all educational offerings. And I think one of the things that is not offered in the school but is being offered through LifeWise is something that's very important. Every child should have access. Community. We are an integral part of the community and contribute to its success. I mean, that's all part of that. Communication, foster opportunities to listen, question, reflect, and share thoughts, ideas, and insights. I mean, this is an incredible opportunity to do that. How, you know, collaboration. We embrace diversity, interdependence, importance of learning from and with each other throughout life. Okay, I see my time is up.
Thank you.
But I think, you know...
Thank you.
Yeah, hopefully.
Next up, we have David Long.
Thank you to the School Board and District staff. Appreciate your time and attention tonight. David Long, 6469 Woodthrust Drive, Westerville, Ohio 43081. I'd like to speak in favor of the release time religious instruction policy. I have a future member of Westerville Elementary Schools. He is eight and a half months old, so he has a few years to go. My concern is if the removal of the release time religious instruction policy will create a precedent where we remove the value of collaboration that the School Board has put forward as being a key value of the Board. I think if we remove the release time religious instruction policy, that limits people sitting at the table. One of the issues that I see going into this election year is the inability to discuss multiple ideas and come to levels of discussion and agreement and collaboration and instead creates division and infighting. And I believe that if we remove the release time religious instruction policy, it also does not let important minorities have an opportunity at the table to be able to collaborate and participate in the school system as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Doug Krensky.
No LifeWise again. I'll move on to a different topic. Let's talk about my favorite topic, the levy. So on behalf of, we now have a nice little group formed called Westerville Levy Concerns. Have a nice Facebook page if you want to look it up. It's business owners, senior citizens, retirees, parents. There's quite a group that has formed. Let's talk about the impact of what the levy will be if it passes. This permanent school levy has a lot of domino effect to it. Let's talk about business owners first. Again, the 16% increase to school property taxes, what does that do to business owners? It forces them to raise prices. They can't just absorb another cost increase. So what happens when you raise prices? Your sales go down, hurt your business. We don't need more failing businesses. Second, renters, apartments and homes that are being rented in the Westerville School District. What happens to those folks? Well, landlords, again, like a business owner, you're not just going to absorb another school property tax like the reevaluation we just had. So what's going to happen there? I'm betting rents are going to go up. So do apartment people like that? Do people that are renting homes like that? No. So what's that going to do? Force them to move out of the district, move somewhere, but rents are going up. I can pretty much assure you, if this passes, it's going to happen. Senior citizens, 16% increase to their school property taxes. What does that mean? It means a lot. And what it means is sacrifices. Food, medical, what are they going to have to sacrifice again, again, after the reappraisal of real estate property values that just happened? So are they going to move? Where are they going to move to? All the values are up. So they can't move. They can't afford to stay. They can't afford to go. Their prices are going up. Where are they going to sacrifice? I know many senior citizens now, since I'm 64, I know a lot of folks that are retired, senior citizens on fixed income. It's not good for them. So the impact to those folks, not good. All residents in general, 16% increase in your school property taxes, what are you going to cut back on? I've already thought about what I would have to cut back on. Is it pay-to-play school activities? Is it medical? Is it food? What is it going to be? It's a sacrifice. You have to give to the school system when you're taking it yourself. Now what are you going to have to do? Sacrifice. So overall, it's a sacrifice for everybody. It has a huge impact on the community, business owners, renters, landlords, everybody. So the problem is if property taxes are going up on average $172 for every $100,000 valuation, what does that mean? Well, the average home value in ZIP Code 43081 is $354,000, believe it or not, after the last reevaluation. So what's that going to cost you as a homeowner if that's your average valuation? It's $608.88. That's what your increase is going to be next year. So because it's a permanent tax levy, it's not only going to be $608 this next coming year, over the next 10 years, it's going to be $6,088. I've lived in my house for 31 years. So the next analogy is after 20 years, what is it going to cost you? $12,177 if this levy passes. So it's not just one year. It's five years. It's 10 years. It's 20 years. It's a permanent levy. Never a chance to vote in again. You can never rate the system on whether they're doing a good job or a bad job with your money. So as an example, the $30 million, it was just transferred from a general operating levy, which, that's exactly what we're talking about now, just got transferred from general operating to capital. So once this gets voted in and if the law doesn't change, they can do whatever they want as a Board with that money. Home value, if you're $500,000, which is a lot of now $500,000 values, that means over the next 20 years, you're going to pay $17,200 more. So all this simply means is it's permanent, it's expensive, and it's totally unnecessary. Those are the problems. The solution, I would encourage everybody to vote to register, if you haven't already, by October 7th. If you just recently moved into the District, change your address so you can vote. And when you do vote, vote no on this issue 44. And I would encourage the Board to redo the five-year projections, make them more realistic, transfer back the $30 million so we don't need any more money over the next five years. And if anybody would like to join our group, it's Westerville Levy Concerns on Facebook. See you next Board meeting. Thank you.
Next up, we have Heather Reynolds.
Hi. Heather Reynolds, 100 South Hempstead Road, Westerville, 43081. I just read my email because I am horrible at reading email, so I did not prepare ahead of time. However, I came today in support of LifeWise. I'm highly offended by a lot of the things that were said today and the stereotypes placed on myself and my son by the other part. And I feel like what's being said is that you can make a choice on what your child can do, only if we approve and we approve of what's being taught. And what I, if they don't approve of my religious beliefs, my child is going off-campus. He's not even on campus. He's going during lunch and recess. He is not losing any instruction. By the way, I would not mind if he did, but he is not losing any instruction. And if you're saying that I can go to a private school, at one point in time, I did pay for my children to go to private school. I was paying $2,600 a month for my children to go to private school. So I did make that choice for quite a while. And then if you are saying, "Why don't you go after school?" Well, I'm a teacher. I've been teaching 29 years. I have been in the public school system and I'm busy teaching. I can't get home to get, pick him up after school if he's in an after-school program. So if I'm busy and I can't get home, how many other parents are working and they can't get home to pick their child up from an after-school program? The nice thing about LifeWise is that it is done during the school week, during the school day, and my child loves going. I would be completely offended if they took it away. I just feel like you're treating Christians as an ugly stepchild. I know in the high school, they have a prayer room for other religions, but we can't let our kids leave campus? I just find this offensive. And if it's taken away, I'll vote no. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Connie Pradmore. Until this week, I was at 541 Tansy Lane, Westerville. I just moved to Delaware. I just wanted to say that you've heard the credentials from the teachers that spoke here this evening and how they have been trained, the degrees that they have. I'm a volunteer. I'm also on the Board, but I have a BA degree in Christian Education from Asbury University. I also have a... I also have a certificate from the International Teacher Trainer Association to teach. I ended up, I started to go to a program similar to this in Virginia to start my job, but instead went into nursing. So I have a diploma in nursing. I have a BA degree in nursing. And as of this year, I have an active RN license for 50 years. I also have a master's degree in Intercultural Studies from Asbury Theological Seminary. And I'm a volunteer. The people in Life Wise are well-trained. They are each one, we have to go through the background checks. And if we don't pass it, then we're not working with Life Wise. But I wanted to stress the fact that the diversity of students that we get in Life Wise is amazing. I've been to the Mission Field twice, to South Korea as well as to Columbia. And we have Egyptians, we have Mexicans, we have multiple Africans in Life Wise, and they are all treated the same as the children from the United States of America because they're all Westerville students and they're valuable, valuable people. And I love that fact, that there's such a diversity. I also wanted to challenge those people who spoke up. Life Wise has a Life Wise 101 every month now. And any one of you are invited to come, see what Life Wise does, see what goes on in the classroom. And I challenge each one of you, come to a Life Wise 101, see what we do, see how the students respond before you speak up and share things that just aren't right and aren't true with Life Wise. So I encourage you to keep the RTRI the way it is. Let us continue, and I thank you very much.
And next up and last up is Linda Went. Welcome. Oh, yes. Okay, well, that concludes our public comment period. And next up is board comments. Who'd like to start?
I'd like to start. Thank you very much to all the speakers on all the sides. I never say both sides because I truly believe there are multifaceted issues in any contentious situation. Superintendent Hamburg, if you don't mind, I have a clarification question for you. This is regarding the release of liability, right? So I know there's back and forth happening. I want to understand, and this may not be a question you can answer now, but this is the question I would like answered. The difference between the removal of a release of liability and the assumption of liability?
Yes, so as the director of Life Wise, Jennifer Jory, shared, they have offered to take their waiver form out of the equation, which was originally not taking liability. And I think that's where the MOU would come into place. So that's the piece that we've had to work with the attorneys on, is to make sure it's not just saying that they're waiving liability, but also that they have to, under the policy, assume liability. And so that's where the MOU would come into place. We would also want to make sure that there's a signed acknowledgement that we have access to from the parents so that we know before students leave that that's all in place. So we're working through that with our attorneys, which is the piece, again, that kind of takes some time.
Okay, thanks for that. So until that is ironed out, the difference between the removal of a release of liability and the assumption of liability, I'm not comfortable with the program proceeding. So what I would like to understand is, at this point, it's in violation of policy, correct? Okay, so in order for the program to continue, we need to, correct isn't the right word, but overcome that policy violation?
Yes, and as I mentioned earlier, Life Wise has provided a willingness to work with us on that. We just haven't had time in the two weeks since that was suspended. They've given us some information, pointed us toward another direction, another district they'd worked with, so I was able to reach out to them and get a template. So again, we just met Thursday afternoon, and so our attorneys need some time to make sure that they have all the pieces in there that they're comfortable with, to make sure that this particular program is complying with the policy. I did want to mention, I know the food was brought up. I think that one's a lot more minimal of a concern for us than the assumption of liability. But just to update the board, we have gotten conflicting information from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce as to, there seems to be a discrepancy between the state and the USDA on what qualifies as being, it's not even so much about the paying for the meals as it is, can we even serve the meals off-site if it's for a non-curricular purpose, which this would not be considered curricular, obviously, it's not one of our programs. And so we have gotten conflicting information, including Carrie Dennis, our business manager, has requested in writing, and what they sent her in writing was still not clear. So that piece is not resolved, and it's not because Life Wise isn't willing to provide meals. It's just, we're not clear on whether or not the kids can take the meals regardless of who pays for them at this point. If not, they would have to be completely provided outside of the school, essentially. Obviously, we would want to make sure that happens because we do have students who have participated, who are on free or reduced lunch. And so we want to make sure they receive a lunch. I just want to be clear, that's not been a problem. Life Wise has volunteered to make sure they receive a lunch. We just need to make sure all that's in compliance with making sure that they are being fed. So our previous model is kind of in flux because the information we continue to receive even as recently as Friday is conflicting from the department. We're trying to work through that with our attorneys as well.
Thank you. So I'm going to summarize the upshot that I think is what most people are interested in. You tell me if I'm correct or incorrect. That is that while it's been determined that the program is in violation of the policy, it will not start. So as a board member, what I'm thinking about is the suspension of the RTRI policy is not necessary because the program isn't going to start until we have an MOU where they assume liability.
Correct, which our attorney is working on right now, based on information that was provided to us from the Life Wise founder.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll go. So I also want to reiterate, thank you to everybody who provided public comment, whether you're here tonight or you have submitted via email. We've gotten lots of emails over the past couple of weeks. So thank you. That's what democracy is all about. Addressing, you know, the topic of Life Wise tonight, there's been a lot of comments, either singing the praises of the curriculum and this opportunity or expressing opposition to what might be taught at Life Wise. Many of you have reiterated via email or in person that RTRI is legal, and it is. As we've discussed, so we have a policy that is now back into effect after this meeting. And as long as a group or an org is in compliance with the policy, they're able to coordinate, correct me if I'm wrong. But at this time, however, we do not find Life Wise to be in compliance with the policy. We do not have a clear understanding of how participating kids are going to get fed within legal parameters. And again, this is more of a USDA issue, it sounds like, than ODEW. So just trying to get all of that squared away. And until these issues are addressed, it wouldn't be wise for us to coordinate our responsibilities to these kids and making sure that they are safe, they are fed, all of that. I think, you know, in the meantime, I'm sure Life Wise could continue to operate after school or on weekends. I myself attended Sunday School. I attended PSR, Pair School Religion Class, first grade through eighth grade at our Catholic church, every Monday night for 90 minutes, much to my chagrin sometimes, during the school year. And I spent ninth and 10th grade in Sunday evening youth community. This was particularly important to my family, especially my mother, and she made it a priority that my brother and I got to these classes. So, you know, RTRI is not the only choice parents have in fulfilling this commitment to Bible study and religious education for their children. So I just want to make mention that several of you have said, you know, they're going to miss out on this education. There are other options while we continue to figure this out. So that's what I have to say about Life Wise. I also have just a quick update. This isn't really legislative, but the vouchers hurt Ohio lawsuit that Westerville has signed onto. We are on track for a November 4 court date in Franklin County for that to proceed forward. And that is about the constitutionality of the voucher expansion program. So just wanted to give that quick update. That's the day before Election Day, so it'll be a busy week.
Okay, thank you to everyone speaking tonight. I appreciate it. We're here for kids and students and staff, and I'm going to bring that back around now with my comments. So just want to highlight again, Mark Twain and Robert Frost are turning 50. We're super excited. Thursday night, 5:00 PM, there will be a celebration at Mark Twain. Saturday, 12 to 3, there will be a celebration at Robert Frost. September is National Suicide Prevention Month. So this is really a heavy topic, right? And there's a lot going on with our students and staff, all of our students and staff. So I want to tell you some amazing things that our district and our community has put in place that support our kids. So first off, we have Hope Squad in our high schools, and it's been there for several years. It's a peer-to-peer suicide prevention program. And we are, we have been lucky enough to partner with Westerville Education Challenge that raises money each year, just did a huge fundraiser, raised $31,000. And we have now put Hope Squad into our middle schools because of that, so five middle schools. So we are covering eight schools at this point. On top of that, school counselors, licensed clinicians, Concord Counseling. Super amazing. I did a little digging tonight on our website. I should do more of that. If you look at teaching and learning, student well-being, there's a stress management and executive functioning strategies resource hub. Please go check it out. There seems to be a lot going on in this room. I think all of us adults could benefit from that, so I'm going to ask everyone to do that. And that's it for me, so happy Monday.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight too and taking the time to prepare comments and the emails that we've received. I assure you that we read them all. I am going to say, I wasn't here last week, our last meeting, because I had COVID. So I want to just share some thoughts that I've been having. I do remain concerned about the disruption that happens during the school day. We do have the kids for a very short time. I understand that not everybody agrees with that, but really what it comes down to is legality of the operations, making sure that it complies with the Ohio Revised Code and our board policy. This is with our lawyers. I know that honestly, we have been spending so much time on this. And as Superintendent Hamburg had stated, you know, we're just beginning the school year too, and it's been taking a lot of time, and we are working through it. But as I said, it's with our attorneys. I would like to call the public's attention to a House Bill, House Bill 240. This bill would change one word that would require school districts to allow for religious release time during school hours from May till shall, so requiring it. It is, we are hearing that it will likely pass, if not in lame duck and through a Christmas tree bill where they just shove a bunch of stuff in, or at the beginning of the next session. So just so the public knows that's out there as well. I also want to thank all the applicants for putting forward an application for the vacant board spot. It was really amazing to see how many people put something forward, and it just shows how much support is in this district. So really appreciated that. We're still working through the process. And like I said, I continue to be heartened by the amount of interest and support for our public schools. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to move into, oh. Yeah, yeah. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, September 23, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Early Learning Center, which is here, 936 East Wind Drive, Westerville, Ohio 43081. And with that, may I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Hendricks, will you take the vote?
Ms. Davison?
Yes.
Ms. Saltman?
Yes.
Ms. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Meyer?
Yes.
You're welcome to stay, but I don't know how long we'll be, but thank you. Okay, we are back from executive session.
Oh, what time is it?
8:52. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
And Ms. Hendricks, would you please take the vote?
Ms. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Saltman?
Yes.
Ms. Davison?
Yes.
Ms. Meyer?
Yes.
Were adjourned.